I call the Osseo City Council Regular Meeting to order here at 7:00 PM, Monday, August 25th. A roll call, looks like we're missing Councilmember Cook this evening, I wish him a speedy recovery. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag, United States of America, the two republics for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think you look for a motion to approve tonight's agenda. Okay, got a motion by Councilmember Torres to approve tonight's agenda, is there a second?
Second.
Sent by Councilmember Harkoff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
All is opposed? Motion passes four to zero. Alright, number five consent agenda, any questions on the consent agenda, if not, we'll look for a motion.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, got a motion by Councilmember Harkoff to approve tonight's consent agenda, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Torres, any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
All is opposed? Motion passes four to zero. Alright, next is matters on the floor, anyone wishing to speak? Please fill out one of these yellow forms, hand it to one of the administrative people, and we'll call you up by name, and state your matter you wish to discuss. Either one, just hand it in. You can just hand it to me, save everybody steps. Let's not get too formal. Alright. Marcus.
Yep. Close. Marcus Leeb, 440 Second Avenue Northeast. I'm gonna ask a couple of questions, I know this council doesn't really like to talk during these, so I'm gonna keep it simple to yes or no questions, and hope that I'll get something, okay? We'll start with something easy. Are we in the 150th year of Osseo? Thank you, got a yes, okay? Do we have a celebration coming up in September? Yes, okay, we're getting yeses, good, okay. So here's my question next. In looking at our recent budget, is 60% of our budget going to public safety for the upcoming year? Which was sent out in our recent flyer, yes or no?
This year's budget?
The upcoming budget, that was published, sent out to us for the September newsletter, saying 60.2% is for public safety, out of the $4.1 million.
I don't know that that could be for 25, because we don't have those numbers yet.
Okay, so it'd be for 24, correct?
Yep.
Okay, of that 60%, which was for public safety, was 10% for the fire department?
We don't have those numbers in front of us, we can't answer education.
Okay, I can, because I've seen the numbers, I appreciate you saying that though, Mr. Schultz. Out of the $2.1 million for public safety budget, only 10% was for our fire department. So that's a very large amount that is going to public safety, but not very much going to our fire department, which, would you agree, is also as important to this town as our police department?
They have different funding mechanisms.
I understand that, and I know that we're taking, I guess that's my next question, are we pulling from pull tabs that normally go to our fire department to also pull for other things?
They make their own decisions on how they're gonna donate their money.
My concern as a citizen of the town, is I am watching my taxes go up and up and up. I am seeing that we are hiring, it is my understanding, two more officers, is that correct? For upcoming?
Negative.
Negative, one?
Nope.
Okay, so we're staying at 14, is that the number that's correct?
That is not the number that is correct.
What is the number that is correct, if you don't mind me asking?
For full strength?
Total number of full staff for the?
Full staff is 13.
13, okay, so 13 police officers.
Not 13, yeah, 13 top to bottom.
13 staff?
Yep.
Okay, for a town of 2,900. We have an empty press building, which, sounds like we're not doing much with, is that correct? Being used for trainings for other towns? Yes?
Plans being?
Okay, alright. Those plans, will they involve our taxes going up again?
Don't know.
Don't know, okay, I appreciate the honesty, as always Mayor Poppy. Here's my concern, folks. We got a lot of people selling, we got a lot of people leaving. We have businesses that are empty right now, we have a lot to talk about money, we have bills and dollars that are being stretched, stretched, stretched. And you've got folks in this town who are really struggling to make sure they can stay here. Especially with the way that our taxes are right now. We have a fire department that it sounds like is doing everything they can with the money they're getting, but there are certain things that could be helping more with them, and it sounds like we have... And again, I want to be clear on this, and this is on record, I'm not anti-cop, but we're giving a lot of money over to our public safety, but we're not giving as much money that we could be helping out our fire department, which is as important. And my struggle that I'm seeing here is, as someone who's lived in this town for a long time, I'm seeing businesses leave, I'm seeing people leave. I'm not seeing spending being curbed. I'm not seeing money being saved. And I'm hearing, and you can tell me if I'm wrong, and I would appreciate if you do, that we have a $2.2 million debt in our water bill, or our water budget. Which, if true, if that is a large number, no, okay. So there is no deficit or debt in our water? No, okay, good. Because if that were true, that would be very worrisome considering our rates went up again. And I just want to make sure that we're not pricing people out of this town. I have friends who wanted to move here, who looked at our town, they can't afford it. I want them to be here, because I want to make sure we have money coming into the town, because I care a great deal about this town. My kids grew up here, our daughters dance together. Mr. Cook and I both teach in the district. I love this town. But I don't want to leave because I can't afford to live here, because I got a teacher's salary, folks. And I don't know if you know this, we don't make a lot of money. So my hope is, as someone who lives here, that you're working to make sure that we can all afford to be here. I appreciate the time, thank you.
Any other matters on the floor? Third time matters on the floor, seeing no additional notices, we'll move on. Number seven, special business, approve special event permit for the Osseo 150th Celebration Committee.
Mayor, council, we've gotten a special event permit for the park. During Lions Roar, from 2 to 4, the 150th Committee wants to use the ban shell and half the park, as you can see by the drawing, to put on a 150th celebration. They're asking for police services, along with some Public Works time, to assist them in getting the park ready, and also to have police services since there are going to be some elected officials at this event, that have confirmed some time. So, we're asking the council to approve all department heads have signed off, saying that they understand we'll do contracts once this is approved, to make sure we have enough... Everything's contracted and paid for.
Questions, council? Questions, we'll look for a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve the Osseo 150th Committee Celebration during Lions Roar.
Okay, got a motion by Councilmember Harkoff to approve the special event permit, is there a second?
Second.
Sent by Councilmember Torres. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
All is opposed? Motion passes four to zero. Alright, number eight, public hearings, no public hearings this evening. Number nine, old business, 9A, approve update to the security measures at municipal buildings.
Mayor and council, we, back on June 30th, at the council work session, they identified, we identified some areas, the council wanted some information to come back to them. Those areas were more life and safety related, so we've got information tonight on the roof, which has come back. There was some talk about doors and windows, and then one of the bigger items was the safety areas within the city. So currently, we have panic buttons that is monitored by one company, we have doors and fire alarm by another company, and we have cameras which aren't monitored at all, but they're to a DVR. So that DVR now is 10 years old plus, and we're starting to see some problems with it, and it's starting to, we can't add any more cameras even if we wanted to. And the current doors and cameras can be not monitored from apps on phones, and we're unable to do that currently, and so there's some updates that could happen. Now, when I took this on and decided to get some bids, and I had several different companies come out and bid on different parts, and what those companies could do, and what they could cover, and there were four different companies that came out and looked at these different areas. So I gotta get down to where I'm at, sorry. So there was UHL, HBS was another company, Betcher was one company, and Security 101. So if you look, there's an Excel spreadsheet that kind of lays out what each company was able to do, what they were bidding on, and then some of their payments, so how much per month, monitoring, that kind of stuff. So, we did decide, and staff-wise, talking internally, that we don't need door access monitored. We do not need our cameras monitored, as far as a separate company monitoring them per month. We do need the fire monitoring and our panic alarm monitoring. What that would do is, if one of our panic alarms is pushed, then it would go to a separate company who monitors, which then would alert police, fire, whoever needed to respond. Same with our fire monitoring. That would be something where we'd want that fire, if there's a fire within the city hall, that it would be monitored and get police out here, or fire to come out. So, there was only one company that could do all four different monitoring, or the things that we're asking for with door access, cameras, panic alarm, and fire monitoring. One company was able to, or two companies were able to do three, but they were different. So Betcher did door access, panic alarm, and fire monitoring. Security 101 only did two, that was door access and panic alarms. UHL was able to give us a bid on door access, cameras, panic alarm, and fire monitoring. And then HBS Verkata was able to do door access, cameras, and panic alarm. And so when we looked at all of this together, you know, all these companies were fairly similar, except in the fire monitoring area, and I looked at Betcher and UHL, and in that area, I think UHL is closer to what we really need, because our panel back here is down. So it does need to be replaced, and that's where they came up with their number. I think when I looked at the Betcher bid, it wasn't to replace that fire panel, it was just to kind of interrupt and put something that goes up into the cloud, and would be monitored that way, it was almost like a cell diverter, and I just don't think that's enough. I think we do need to replace that panel. And I think by fire code, we need to have a working panel. And looking at that was why I recommended using HBS Verkata for door access, cameras, and panic alarms. One of the side notes to that is, is that they're able to do a monthly lease, and then at the end of a five-year lease, it would be $1 to buy all the equipment. That would be the $1 payback after five years. And then what we'd need from there is not equipment updates, but just, they have licensing involved in that, for that. And then using UHL for fire, replacing the fire panel, and then monitoring both City Hall and Public Works. Because Public Works, their fire panel's working right, but the one in City Hall is not.
Are we paying per month for that right now?
The fire monitoring? It's similar, I think we're paying somewhere in the $60 to $70 range.
Just for the one currently?
Well, yeah, pretty much, yeah.
So then this 107, would you be for this one, or is that both?
The one out at Public Works would not cost, that doesn't cost anything to...
But this 107 in this memo is just for the one here?
No, the 107 would be, you mean per month?
Yeah.
That's $53.95 for City Hall and Public Works.
Okay, so it's both of them?
Yep, 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 sorry. I'm just looking at the spreadsheet, I wasn't looking at my memo. And this would not be adding any, this would be replacing cameras and door access, and it would be, I don't know if there's a replacement, I think it is for panic alarms, if we go with them too.
Because we're having a lot of access with the doors locking and unlocking.
Well, that's the problem that we're running into, is the system's just not working well right now. We just had them out to fix the door in our, to get into our offices, it was down. So, we're running into a lot of problems that way with the current company that monitors that, or does that for us. And in talking to the other companies, they don't allow, it'd be an upfront cost. There wouldn't be the leasing option. And we do have, this would not be a budget item, it would not come out of the general fund, it would be coming out of the CIP. And so whatever that leasing cost is per year, we would be able to put that on to the CIP for the next five years. It would just sit as a number. And our facility has about $224,000 in it right now. As far as the CIP.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
So, so we've got $224 in the facilities fund, and we're doing an ongoing lease for these kind of things. It looks like your recommendations were based on just strict recurring costs, is that correct?
Yes, having it stretched out over five years.
Yeah, so I'm just looking at this, is there, are whatever software systems these things are all feeding, is it like the same for everybody? So you can, like, or are we looking at, like, for the door monitoring stuff, that's a standalone online system? For the fire, that's totally a different thing, but then the video retention and that kind of stuff, that can be monitored anywhere at any time, so do they all feed like Alarm 1? Or what do they feed into for software?
So, HBS Verkata has their own, it's Verkata, that's the name of the camera system, and the access through the application. I think UHL, it's watchdog, digital watchdog is what they use. And so for this company, everything would go from door access, camera, panic alarm, would go to the same place. So with Verkata, they just don't do fire monitoring or alarms.
And I like the concept of online, it allows us for access as long as it's set up, you know, and the right retention schedule, you guys will figure all that stuff out. But we don't need to do any, like, the DVR hardware that's failing, the cameras are still transmitting, it just can't be picked up by anything. And, I mean, is we looking at, like, the life expectancy of these things, is it the lease of life? I mean, what, life and lease, or is it?
You know, in speaking with them, they're like, their cameras are seven to 10-year cameras. I mean, but the technology's not going to be the same, right? Go five years from now, you could be looking at a totally different technological advance. I don't know cameras very well, or door, I think door access is door access, I don't think that's a problem. It's just when you talk about equipment costs, it could be an updating of a camera. The current cameras we have are not IP cameras, so they can't go to the cloud, they go to DVR, they're just wired directly there. And so that's a new advancement in the last 10 years, that has come up, that if we were to buy cameras, that's what you have. And what the nice part about this is, especially with some of the projects that we're looking at, financing in the future, the cameras on Verkatas and UHL, and Security 101, and Betcher, all of these camera systems, you can add easily, and you can monitor those. So as long as there's power, we could put cameras in a park, we could put them in, you know, wherever. They're available to move to different locations, you're just adding cameras, not adding anything else, while wiring and cameras and power, that's what we need. So it's just powering the camera, the camera goes up to the cloud, so they can be placed just about anywhere.
They just need to have an internet connection, since they're IP cameras, so...
Yep, that's all we need, so...
Okay, yeah, I mean, it's important for us to protect our stuff. I mean, you know, there's areas, specifically City Hall, I mean, you just, you need to make sure that you have access control, it needs to be readily available. I imagine access control can not necessarily be done, you know, at a standalone system now, it could be done from an app, like, a couple of weeks ago, we had a problem where the doors weren't programmed right, for whatever reason, okay? So then people were locked out, so that's kind of something, I don't have any, I mean, this is, again, it's a necessary expense of securing our stuff, I mean, it really is. You know, if the fire, the fire, I mean, building starts fire, I mean, that'd be a big problem if it's not monitored, because literally our fire trucks are in the building, so, you know, but, so, I'm totally fine with what the recommendation is on this, I guess that's the short story.
Council questions? Now, we'll look for a motion then.
Mr. Mayor, I guess hearing silence here, I'll make a motion to approve using HBS leasing option of $1,054 per month for 60 months for door access?
$64.
For what?
$1,064.
$1,064 for, per month for 60 months. For door access, camera and panic alarms, use UHL for fire alarm, upgrade monitoring, total cost is $78.50 basically, and equipment costs, and $107.90 per month in monitoring costs.
Okay, got a motion by Councilmember Schultz to approve the update to security measures for the City Hall and other municipal buildings, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Harkoff. Any further discussion?
So I'm assuming since this is coming out of the 224 CIP, I mean, that's what the money's there for, to be used for, right? I mean...
Correct, it's CIP, it's our capital improvement plan for our facilities.
Yep, just getting that on the record.
Anything else? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
All is opposed? Motion passes four to zero. Alright, 9B, approve City Hall and Public Works roof repairs.
Mayor, council, it was asked of staff at that same June 30th work session for us to look at the roofs on both buildings and see what we could do. We had a quality trusted commercial construction and roofing inspection come out, or, sorry, quality trusted commercial construction and roofing, they came out and did an inspection of our roofs, both on City Hall and on Public Works. City Hall scored a D rating overall with deficiencies to the sheet metal, rubber membrane, flashing areas of the roof. The report recommends immediate repairs to these areas in the amount of $2,745, and $2,252 remedial repairs. The D rating suggests roofs should be replaced in two to four years. Public Works also scored a D rating with similar deficiencies to the sheet metal, flashing, rubber membrane, and wind scouring, leaving roof materials directly exposed to the elements. The roof, the report recommends immediate repairs in the amount of $4,655. So the roofs have been repaired multiple times over the last few years, including annual repairs to stop leaks. It was decided at the June 30th work session to order roof inspection report on both buildings. Reports show the roofs at the end of their life expectancy. And so we're asking council to look at the roof inspection report, which we, if we, if somebody wants to, I can show some pictures and some things up here. Which I can show, I think. Okay, here's the quality trusted repairs, Public Works building, they got up onto the actual building roof, took some pictures showing some areas that have been scoured, or some areas that are just deteriorating, flashing. You can see here more flashing, some wind scouring, some deficiencies as far as deterioration, just on the roof rock. So you can see that things are quickly going down, and there's some flashing issues that they consider emergency as far as not having leakage. They gave it a D rating on the membrane and flashing, and sheet metals a C. Overall, a D rating, that's where they gave the recommendation, and some repairs that we should get done, with an estimated repair cost of $4,655. That's for Public Works. City Hall, they got back up on top, here's some issues, corrugated metal, it's starting to fall apart. Took some pictures, the actual roof, and you got some flashing issues, deteriorating flashing. Again, some more flashing and stuff, which they consider immediate repair. Debris, again, some more flashing in corners. Again, unused items that are just on the roof. So, again, membrane, a D, flashing's D, sheet metal, C overall, D. When you look to the right there, it says two to four years of service life remaining, max. So those are the recommendations by the quality... Quality trusted commercial construction and roofing, so... So we're asking the council to take a look at that report, give us some feedback, or authorize the repairs that needed to be, and then we need to have some future discussions on how we're gonna pay for these roofs in the future.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
So how much time does this buy us?
Two to four years.
Two to four years, max.
For the thing, is that the same for Public Works?
Yep, they're both on the same track, two to four years.
In my opinion, I think we have to seal them up, and this is, I mean, keep the water out of the building. And then in two and four, I mean, as we went through that bond maturity schedule, I mean, financially, things will look a lot different. In a few years from now. I mean, a whole roof repair's not something we can do right now.
Mr. Mayor, yeah, there's always gonna be people in the community who'll be like, you spent $10,000 to get two, four years out of a roof, and then you spent another, let's just say, $160,000 on those two roofs, you wasted $10,000, and they do the math, and blah, blah, blah. The reality of it, to your point, is that, you know, there's long-term planning that's involved here. There's a lot of bond maturation, a lot of debt that's coming off the books, stuff like that, that puts us in a better financial position to afford this down the road. Am I a huge fan of saying, let's drop 10 grand just to seal the place up? I am not, but the place needs to be sealed up. I mean, we've got standing water, we've got internal flooding, we've got foundation deterioration, we've got all kinds of different problems, we've got mold remediation issues, and this $10,000 is a drop in the pan compared to a medical claim against that. So, with that said, make a motion to approve City Hall Public Works roof repairs in the amount of $9,652, and no sense.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Schultz to approve the City Hall and Public Works roof repairs, seconded by Councilmember Torres, any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
All is opposed? Motion passes four to zero. Alright, 9C, approve second reading, adoption, and summary publication of ordinance 2025, amending sections 153.15... 153.150 and 153.151 of the city code.
Mayor, council, I'm going to turn this over to Attorney Techen.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So this is an ordinance that has been in front of the council a couple of times now. We're bringing it back to the council for a second and final reading and approval. This is an update to the city zoning ordinance relating to variances in conditional use permits. Essentially, it is bringing the ordinance into compliance with the legal standard for variances and making a a few other minor edits and updates in the code. So unless there are questions or you want me to go into more detail, what we're looking for tonight is a motion to approve the second reading and by a separate motion to approve a resolution that would authorize a summary publication of the ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion for the second reading.
For what of the second reading?
The, of the resolution approving summary publication of ordinance number 2025.
Approving?
That's the first one, right?
First motion is just for, not for the resolution, but for second, uh, second reading of the ordinance.
Approve the second reading. Okay, I got a motion by Councilmember Torres to approve the second reading of the of the amendment or the ordinance section changes. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Harcoff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes four to zero. Now we look for a motion for the summary publication. In the resolution approving that. Okay, we got a motion by Councilmember Torres to approve the resolution approving the summary publication of the ordinance. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Harcoff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Attorney Techen, please.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. This is resolution number 41. Councilmember Torres.
Aye.
Councilmember Harcoff.
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz.
Aye.
Mayor Poppy.
Aye, motion passes four to zero. All right, number 10, new business, 10A swearing in of Officer Christopher Patrinsky.
Mayor, council, um, tonight we're here to swear in our newest officer, Christopher Patrinsky. He is start date was August 23rd, 2024. Officer Patrinsky's been doing a great job. He's done with his FTO program. He's also been here one year, so he's off of probation. And that's usually when we do our swearing in. Chris is also in charge of our server training, uh, equipment purchasing, I think. Well, you go through Todd, I suppose, to buy equipment stuff, but Todd loves Amazon. The worst thing I ever did was get Amazon, but to Todd. And then he also does tobacco, THC and alcohol compliance checks. That's what he's in charge of. So Christopher is, has really, uh, become part of the team. He's been out, uh, he's super active at night. He's working straight nights. Have you worked a day shift yet except FTO? Nope. So he's been on straight nights. He's kind of been stuck on whatever shift is left over for everybody right now. He's a little man on the totem pole. But we've been very proud of what he's been able to do. He's also, um, as you can see in your, uh, agenda item, he's also been given a couple of awards, one here at the police department, one here at a city council meeting for the same incident. That was the crash where we had a life-saving incident where he pulled somebody from a burning car. He did that during his FTO period, uh, and that's just been continuing on as far as his performance. He was also, um, received an award for, uh, from the I-94 Chamber of Commerce. I know a couple of us were there during that time. And, and again, that's, that's pretty, pretty brand new to be running right up to a car that's on fire and pulling somebody from the car. So uh, we've been very impressed with how Christopher handles himself, uh, what he's been able to do while he's been here. He's ingratiated himself within the team. Like I said before, uh, it was pretty cool to see how everybody's, um, coming together for this community and doing all this hard work. Our, our department right now is, is running famously. I mean, again, I'm taken away 45% of the time and it's run without a beat. And everyone has to pitch in and, and do their job. So, uh, we're really pleased to bring Christopher here. I think who's going to be doing your badge here in a little bit? Who would that be?
My little brother Ryland.
Ryland and your mom. Okay, mom, aye. What's your mom's first name?
Joan.
Joan, hi Joan, nice to meet you. So what we'll do is, uh, with no further ado is we'll get Christopher up here if you want to stand in front. Attorney Techen's going to do, uh, our oath of office and then we'll get the badge pinning.
I, Christopher Patrinsky.
I, Christopher Patrinsky.
To uphold the Constitution of the United States.
To uphold the Constitution of the United States.
In the state of Minnesota.
In the state of Minnesota.
And to faithfully discharge the duties
And to faithfully discharge the duties
of a police officer of the city of Osceola, Minnesota.
As a police officer of the city of Osceola, Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Come on up and we'll get this, once he signs here, we'll get that badge on him. Don't poke him too bad. All right, come on over here and we'll get him up front. Come on, you can go over. Hey, you. Good job. All right, family, friends, should we come up and take a picture? Come on up.
How you doing, sir?
Yep.
Who's that?
Council, that's the mayor.
How you doing, sir?
Good.
What's your name?
Dwayne Poppy.
Dwayne?
Yep.
I see you.
That's Councilmember Tom Harcoff.
And what's the girl's name?
Girl's name?
That's Mary.
I'm Mary. I'm Mary. I see you, Mary.
Or counselor, counselor?
I can't say it.
Counselor. Counsel.
I'm Poppy, so why care?
Y'all see everybody.
I know it's fun at Thanksgiving.
Yeah, I know. Every time. I wish it was Thanksgiving, so good snow.
All right, council and police officers, all get in there. Let's go. Come on, guys. Let's take a picture.
Katie, come in here.
I'm coming, I'm coming.
Suck it in, Zach.
Come on, Katie.
Short folks in front.
You walk up in the front?
No, I don't.
Chinese.
Ready, one, two, three. Gotcha. Is the meeting over yet?
I say that all the time.
No?
Not quite.
Confused on what's going on here.
Thanks, Lieutenant.
You do a great job.
Just one more thing before everyone leaves. I do have to say that when I talked to Chris about this, he asked me to skip it. But I told him no. He's such an unassuming person that, uh, he just, he doesn't like front and center, so. But I, I made him do it. So thank you, family, for coming and we really appreciate it. You guys can take off whenever you wish.
Thanks.
Good job.
Thank you. All right, 10B, approve Pitney Bowes postage meter renewal agreement.
Mayor, council, um, we're up for a new postage meter lease agreement with Pitney Bowes. That's who we've been going through recently. Uh, the current lease for the administration postage machine is nearly ended. Will expire on seven, uh, September 29th. The current lease is $197.19 per quarter. The new five-year agreement includes a bit of an increase due to increases in operating and equipment cost of Pitney Bowes. Will be 237.46 per quarter. Uh, this is an increased cost of $40.20 per quarter. Under the new agreement, the city will receive an updated postage meter featuring current technology. And we do have, uh, officer, people from all across the, uh, the city do utilize that postage meter. It is in the budget and it will continue to be in the budget. So we're asking the council to approve the new lease agreement with Pitney Bowes.
Questions, council? Now we look for a motion. So move. I got a motion by Councilmember Torres to approve the Pitney Bowes postage meter renewal agreement. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Schultz. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I just want to kind of make a thing about this because, you know, it's now 2025. The question is how much the cost, you know, how much is, how much stuff do we mail, right? We try to do as little mailing as humanly possible, but there's still the opportunity to try to connect up with all of our residents in, in separate ways. Also point out the current cost of a first-class stamp is 78 cents. So just shy of a buck to put something in the mail. So the fact that we're only going up that much with this is actually amazing to me. But, you know, to that point, everything costs something. So we have to figure out a way to try to get those costs down too. So, thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes four to zero. All right, 10C, approve accounts payable. Questions on that? If not, we look for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the accounts payable.
I got a motion by Councilmember Harcoff to approve tonight's accounts payable. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Schultz. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes four to zero. Number 11, administrator report.
Nothing.
Assistant administrator.
No report, thank you.
Okay. Counsel and attorneys report, Attorney Techen.
No report.
Councilmember Harcoff.
No report.
Councilmember Torres.
No report.
Councilmember Schultz.
No report.
All right, moving on to announcements. The Osseo Historic Preservation Committee is hosting a pop-up museum at the Osseo Community Center on Friday, September 5th. That's Lions Roar Weekend from 2 till 8. It's one day only, so make sure you stop up there. Items have been curated from our own historical collection, the Maple Grove Historical Society and resident donations. Come walk through the pop-up museum and see over 100 items on display for this special event. And then also as we, uh, you know, are approving permits, our, um, we've got the Osseo Lions Roar starting on Friday, September 5th. Bouncy Houses, Live Music, Vendor and Craft Fair, and the Park Citywide Parade and Bingo are just a few of the highlights for the weekend. The Osseo Lions will have a full schedule events and the parade route will be on the website at osseolions.org. So check that out. That's always a great time and event. And then there will be that special ceremony that we approved tonight. That's 2 o'clock on Saturday after the parade. That'll be at Borbon Park. So come on, stop up and enjoy the activities that weekend. Moving on to adjournment.
Talked.
I got a motion by Councilmember Schultz. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Harcoff. Now debatable, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes four to zero. We're adjourned at 7:44. Thank you.